Welcome, everyone, to the December 10 Eugene City Council Work Session. Welcome, everyone, here at home. And I believe this is the last meeting before our winter break. And so I will pause at the beginning of this and, I think, on the part of all of us, wish everybody a wonderful holiday season and all good things for everybody and their families. And today, we're going to be talking about -- oh, I should say that Counselor Zelenka will be on the phone, and Counselor Sorette is not able to be here today. And so we are doing the meeting on Envision Eugene, and as I understand it, there will be two parts to it, and you'll fill us in on that, right? And then I'm going to try to -- this is sort of a heads-up to council, because we'll try to get through the first part in the first 45 minutes and then leave 45 for the second part. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And it's been a long time coming to this place, although this is not the first time we will have talked about this particular topic, nor that you'll have seen some of this type of information. So we're looking forward to the conversation, not expecting any decisions from the council today, I don't believe. And so -- but we do want your questions, comments, feedback as well. Carolyn, I'll turn it over to you and your team.
Well, we are quite pleased to be at this point, which is really the culmination of well over five years of work. And as you know, we began work on Envision Eugene in 2010. We embarked on Envision Eugene, in part, because we were mandated to by the state legislature, but more importantly, because we wanted to find a common vision for Eugene's future that would help us achieve our community's best outcomes. So we spent the first couple of years working very closely with the community to identify what that community vision is. This work culminated with the 2012 Envision Eugene recommendation that city council then directed staff to implement. Next, we focused on land use efficiencies that would allow us to accommodate over 90% of future jobs and 96% of future homes inside the current urban growth boundary. There will be no urban growth boundary expansion for commercial jobs or multifamily housing. Through city council adopted code amendments, land designation changes, and incentives to increase redevelopment activity, we can and have already begun to maximize the capacity of our current lands. For the remaining need, those land uses that cannot fit inside our current urban growth boundary, we are looking to a modest expansion. Today, we will share with these staffs recommendation for how and where to expand the urban growth boundary for future jobs, parks, schools, and homes. First, I'd like to take a moment to thank those in the community who have spent countless hours providing us with their assistance and expertise. The Envision Eugene Community Resource Group, the Technical Resource Group, the Implementation Resource Group, the Planning Commission, numerous subcommittees, and property owners and residents of the expansion study areas. While today's recommendation is solely a staff recommendation, it was greatly informed by all those who contributed. I know many who participated would want us to be clear that there will be major challenges with any urban growth boundary expansion. We are surrounded by floodplains, wetlands, farmland, forests, and steep slopes. Today's recommendation takes all this into consideration. It is also based on city council's direction from 2012 regarding population forecasts, housing mix, and employment growth rate. We won't have time today to go through all the details of the analysis or the individual comments of those involved, but we have included a great deal of that information in your packets and in the handouts in front of you today. All this information will be available to the public in an online open house through envisioneugene.org on Friday of this week. We will host an in-person open house on January 13, and the city council will host a public forum on January 20. City council will not be asked to provide staff with direction until all these events have occurred. The formal adoption process, which is still to come, will also provide public hearing opportunities before final decisions are made. So first, I will hand it off to Teri Harding to talk about the recommendation for jobs, parks, and schools. Then we'll take time for discussion. And then we'll come back, and Alyssa Hansen will talk about the recommendation for homes. In introducing Teri and Alyssa, I would like to say that staff have worked hard to find the right balance in this recommendation. It is a recommendation that is consistent with state law and considers the community's long-term vision for Eugene. It looks to minimize costs and provide maximum value for the future, and it builds on Eugene's unique attributes and provides growth opportunities to reinforce what makes Eugene Eugene. So with that, I will hand it over to Teri.
Thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, councilors. So we're going to begin with the recommendation for adding land to Eugene for jobs, parks, and schools. And more specifically, we're going to start with parks and schools. There is such a huge component of Eugene's livability, so how do we provide for a thriving Eugene in terms of adding and providing for these community assets? As proposed in the 2012 recommendation, we will add to our beloved community park system in Bethel and Santa Clara, and I'll point those out on the map. Bethel Neighborhood and Santa Clara, and I'm talking about the Green Park additions. These are where park acquisitions and improvements are most needed in our community. Santa Clara does not currently have a community park, and so this land is desperately needed by the residents of this part of the city. And we will add land for the future needs of the growing Bethel School District, right here next to the park, as identified in the school district's long-range facilities plan. So this is the map from 2012, and what I'm showing you today is a refinement of the boundaries for those sites. The city's parks team was able to acquire an additional 16 acres in Santa Clara. Oops, I'm sorry. Let's go back. Wrong button. This is the additional 16 acres that was added to the park. This brings the size of the future Santa Clara Community Park to 35 acres adjacent to Madison Middle School. Here's River Road over here, and then Wilkes Drive leads to Madison Middle School and the park, and the northern portion fronts on River Loop 2. The existing UGB is the solid black line in all of the maps, and then the addition is shown with the dotted black line. Moving over to the Bethel Neighborhood. Golden Gardens Community Park is a 222-acre city-owned property with plenty of room for natural area restoration, passive recreation, and active uses such as playground and ballfields. The park will have multi-use paths connecting to the neighborhood streets, and the whole park will be master-planned with community input in the coming years. The park is adjacent to land owned by Bethel School District, shown as government and education, and will be used for future K-8 school facilities. The district owns almost 80 acres, but only needs to bring 54, the part shown with the dotted line, into the UGB at this time to meet the district's 20-year growth projections. This amount of land provides space to build on the northern portion of the property while protecting floodplain and wetlands on the southern portion of the property. And again, the existing UGB is shown here in dark black line, and the new UGB is shown in the dotted line. That's it for parks and schools. So we're going to move right ahead to land for jobs. From parks and schools, we turn to talking about a really important part of our community for economic prosperity. We know we need more jobs, and we're faced with high unemployment and low wages, but there are actions the city can take to begin to address these issues. The city can add land, apply appropriate zoning, and do master planning. The 2012 recommendation shown here identified study areas inside the UGB for adding flexibility to our zoning, and up here on Chad Drive, to use land more efficiently inside the UGB. It also identified our preferred location at the time for adding industrial land to the urban growth boundary near the Eugene Airport. And now we'll look at a refinement of that boundary. Earlier this year, the city updated our land need for employment, and we were pleased to have our estimated employment growth rate of 1.4% confirmed by a new forecast put out by the Oregon Employment Department. That means we're planning, still planning, for about 35,800 more jobs for Eugene over the next 20 years. And all but 3,000 of them can fit inside the current UGB, and the remaining need will require the UGB expansion, and that's about 8% of the jobs. Inside the current UGB, we have an inventory of just 14 sites over 10 acres in size, and those are shown on this map. Those include vacant, partially vacant, and brownfield sites. And since the 2012 recommendation, the city has actually established a brownfields program in collaboration with Springfield and Lane County. The initial inventory and Phase 1 assessment work was funded by an EPA grant, and further grant funding is being sought to continue working towards brownfield cleanup and site In May of this year, the council adopted efficiency measures in our campus industrial areas. Those are on Chad Drive, Green Hill Technology Park, and out near Heinecks, making them more flexible for office-type uses and a few manufacturing uses such as food and beverage manufacturing. In addition, the new E2 Zone mixed-use employment was applied in West Eugene, allowing a mix of commercial and industrial uses to increase job density along the MX Rapid Transit corridor. These efficiency measures combined to account for about 4,250 commercial jobs inside the Our remaining need outside the UGB is based on a targeted industries approach to provide land needed by the types of businesses Eugene is well-suited to attract. Our analysis of the needs of the targeted industries revealed a large site need of 11 sites from 10 to 75-plus acres in size. The targeted industries list includes three types of manufacturing: advanced, wood products, and food and beverage as targets, and biomedical and environmental services, health and wellness industries, software and educational technology. The targeted industries approach and other employment assumptions were vetted and reviewed with the Technical Resource Group and other stakeholders. So moving on to talk about the UGB expansion analysis process, which is controlled by the state of Oregon, we are first looking at a study area boundary. It includes land inside the metro plan and land generally within a half-mile of the existing UGB. So the gray shaded areas are our UGB study areas. Then we map the land in the study area by priority category under the statewide planning system by its county-assigned plan designation. Oregon Land Use Law aims to protect farm and forest designated land by making it the absolute last priority for bringing into an urban growth boundary. The first priority lands that we're directed to use are actually urban reserves, and Eugene doesn't have any of those. So then we move on to the second priority of lands, shown in the rust color, which include lands designated as residential, commercial, or industrial by Lane County. They include the airport, LCC, and rural residential lands around the city. Third priority lands are shown in the teal color, and they're classified as marginal for their marginal farm or forest value. And then the last priority, again, is farm and forest, shown in the seafoam green around the edges of the city. Other lands not available for urban uses are shown in tan. Those include airport reserve, sand and gravel, and parklands such as Spencer Butte. The next step is to analyze these lands in each priority category to see if they can meet our needs for expansion. In the case of the city's employment land need, the sites must not be publicly owned. They must be over 10 acres in size, not too sloped, not prone to flooding, and not too expensive to serve. So through our analysis, we were able to confirm that the Clear Lake area is actually the only area surrounding the urban growth boundary that can meet our employment land needs. Major roads and utilities are already present in the area because of its location near the airport, and there are no major infrastructure projects such as bridges needed to serve this area. So we began to take a closer look at the development issues and needs in the Clear Lake study area. As you may recall, from 2012, we were directed by council motion to take a look at potential environmental justice impacts of planning for industrial and residential uses in expansion areas. We began that work in April, breaking new ground for Eugene by using an environmental justice lens to plan for public health, environmental quality, and economic prosperity. The best outcomes for planning in this area will be realized by using a combination of planning tools such as master planning and an overlay zone, and partnerships such as with Lane County Public Health to do health impact assessments as development projects come forward. You have a summary of that work also in your packet. The UGB recommendation in the Clear Lake Road area will end up accommodating over 3,000 jobs in Bethel, a 222-acre community park, and a 54-acre future school site, all to be master-planned in partnership with local and state agencies to realize our economic development, natural resource, and livability goals. The city plans to use a green infrastructure approach that manages and cleans stormwater runoff, preserves the floodplain, and preserves certain wetlands, and establishes a new wetland mitigation bank for those low-quality wetlands that must be impacted to accommodate our big employment sites. The area will need commercial support services such as restaurants and banks for employees, and these commercial uses will fill a larger neighborhood need as well. Industrial uses will be most intense in the northern portion of the study area, moving from this area down towards Clear Lake Road, with uses gradually decreasing in intensity to campus employment here south of Clear Lake, and park and school uses adjacent to the existing Bethel Neighborhood. This employment center, in the future, will bring transit surface closer to the Eugene This map shows how the needed employment sites could be situated in this expansion area. The numbers in the ovals are acreage numbers, and they represent how the needed portfolio of sites from 10 to 75 acres in size could be met on the ground. And those needs are summarized in the table here by color code. So for instance, we need four sites from 10 to 20 acres in size, and two from 20 to 50, three from 50 to 75, and two big ones. Actual developable site boundaries will be determined through the master planning and natural resource permitting process, and the city is looking to learn from a pilot industrial site certification and regional wetland permitting process underway in Lynn and Benton Counties right now. We have started that conversation with the state agencies. In terms of the UGB adoption package, what will that package look like? As shown on the maps in the previous two slides, the package will have the UGB location and the conceptual locations of the needed sites in our employment portfolio, comprehensive plan designations and policies, urban transition and overlay zoning, and amendments to the TSP and Public Facilities Plan. You will see all these components as part of the formal UGB adoption process if we're directed to prepare it. But the fun doesn't stop there. After the local adoption is complete, we will continue working on the components necessary to implement the plan and see job development projects come to fruition. As I've mentioned, this work will include economic development planning, a wetlands and stormwater master plan, annexation and zone changes as property owners are eligible and ready to annex and develop their properties, capital improvements programming to build needed infrastructure projects, and the partnership efforts with Lane County Public Health, Travel Lane County, and other economic development and community organizations. Planning for over 3,000 jobs in Bethel in a neighborhood that will also include a large park and land for future schools is a great opportunity to bring amenities to the northwest corner of the city and to add to what's great about Eugene. I'm really looking forward to working on this project and to hearing your discussion about it.
Nice presentation. Very clear. Thank you very much. I just wanted to, before I turn to council for questions, I just wanted to bring up one thing that came to my mind as you were talking about doing the health study for that area. It seems to me that in the earlier discussion, we know that area is already heavily impacted. So I'm wondering if we can expand a sort of envelope that we're looking at to how we can not only keep more bad things from happening, but improve what's already in existence for folks there, and if there are ways that we can sort of target our exploration in that way. Because I think for a long time, we've had a lot of discussions about impact, and everybody sort of throws up their hands and says, "We don't know what to do because it's already there," kind of thing. And so maybe this could be an opportunity to look at that kind of mitigation and see if we can make living in that area a little bit more livable for the folks out there. And I would really appreciate it if we could kind of add that to the opportunities we might have with this. Thanks. Counselor Brown, Taylor, Clark, Pryor, Evans. Okay. We'll start with Counselor Brown.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, this 924 acres at Clear Lake Road mostly is Class 1 and Class 2 soils. We had earlier presentations that showed the soil map. And the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development actively discourages urban expansion onto farmlands for very good reasons. You know, we've had previous work sessions about local food security, increasing the local food supply. You know, to cover up 924 acres is not going to help us get there. It's going to actively be harmful. What kind of case are you going to make to the DLCD to allow this expansion?
The targeted industries approach for employment land is a little different than residential expansion. First, I guess I'll say we definitely recognize that it is farmland and it's last priority for inclusion into the UGB. That being said, there aren't a lot of options. If the city is to meet its demonstrated need of 11 sites, and they have to be of a certain size, it's a process of elimination, looking around the UGB to find lands that will meet those criteria. And the only lands that will meet those criteria are the ones that we have found in Clear Lake. We still have to make that case to DLCD, but feel that we are able to do that under the statutes that guide employment-UGB expansion.
Okay. I'd like to turn to my other big concern here is the industrial expansion, is just what we're talking about, the industrial expansion. I'm just, I got all this information from the packet today. We didn't get this information until we arrived at our desk. All that expansion's going to be in the 97402 ZIP Code. That is the location currently of all but one of the facilities that report to the Toxic Right Chino Program. And in 2013, 705,000 pounds of chemicals are released into the air, the water, and onsite disposal. That's 99% of the city's entire toxic emissions are already happening in that ZIP Code. And of that, 486,000 pounds were released into the air. And to further burden this area with other factories and maybe another cogeneration plant, to me, I think it's unconscionable. To cover up the highest-quality soils, there's only a certain amount of acreage of Class 1 and 2 soils in the Malamute Valley. It's finite. And when you cover it up, it's gone forever. Or you're going to have a brownfield, and maybe decades later, you go, gee, we shouldn't have covered up that farmland, and now we need to clean it up. So to further burden this area with the toxic releases, and then to locate a school there in very close proximity in an area that's already actually very bad air quality, it just doesn't make any sense to me. And I really think that this whole area should be abandoned from consideration. I won't support, in any way, the inclusion of the Clear Lake Road into their expansion of the urban growth boundary. You know, I'll probably need another round, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Betty?
Thank you. I'll second what George said. I think there's no higher need than to preserve the farmland, and that fits in with our goals of reducing the carbon footprint, reducing toxics, and food security. We need food sources near us, and we're going to need them more and more as the air becomes more polluted and we -- so that things don't have to come long distances. And I have a question. What kind of industries need more than 10, specifically, need more than 10 acres? Can you give some examples?
Sure. The manufacturing that we're looking at, advanced manufacturing, food and beverage, and wood products, have a range of site needs. So it's not that they have to have a site 70 acres.
What's advanced manufacturing?
Specialized manufacturing, an example, would be the aviation monitors made in the Green Hill Technology Park. Equipment and manufacturing that requires specialized equipment to make.
Would these be mostly polluting industries?
Well, our intent is to write an overlay zone that would allow the decrease in intensity of uses from the north to the south. That hasn't been written yet, but the intent is to write the regulations with the same stakeholders that helped write the environmental justice paper.
I understood that, but still, it's polluting. And definitely taking farmland. And I think if state law says we have to do this, we should try to change that. But I won't vote for anything that's destroying really good farmland. Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you for the report, and thank you for the years of hard work on this. Looks like the finish line may well be in sight here at some point this next year. My first question is around the industrial acreage. I didn't hear a net number, and I was wondering what net industrial is?
The buildable acres for industrial is 455.
Okay. We didn't talk about constraints much. Will we be doing that at a future point during adoption, or?
Development constraints?
Mm-hmm.
Sure. In terms of the basics that we need to justify the expansion, it's really slope, site size, and floodplain. But there are additional constraints, including wetlands, that will have to be worked out through the permitting process.
That's what I was wondering about. And as we adopt those particular lands, I want to make sure we're not bringing in the way of an industrial land base that we desperately need, what would be, for its purposes, phantom acreage that can actually have the kind of things we need in the way of manufacturing built on it. And of course, I'm sure you've looked at it, so that's just, I want to get a chance to see that. We, in the beginning of the process, we talked several points about the 100-acre-plus sites that are required. I saw that those were all connected. All those particular parcels seem to be connected. Is that how we're addressing that need of 100-plus acre sites?
We're actually not able to find 100 developable acres in one chunk. The most we have been able to find in this study area was the 70-acre sites, and there are some assumptions built into that around which wetlands would be required to be protected and which would be allowed to be filled. So at this point, we think it's likely that we'll be able to secure that amount of acreage as shown on the map, the 70 acres, as we work through the process with the permitting agencies. But we have, there's no 100-acre site out there, unfortunately. But we have, there's no 100-acre site out there, unfortunately.
As we have seen some of the great homegrown companies, like grain millers and Rexias, and folks move to sites of larger size that they need, and not be able to find them here, I want to make sure we're not holding back our own successful local companies from the, you know, or driving them away by simply not having the land that they need in order to be able to expand. I think the manufacturing is a critical need of ours, and I would, given the choice, expand it more than we're talking about right now. With the acreage for parks, I don't know, I recall a discussion about the boat landing just east of the park space that we've acquired, that 16 acres in Santa Clara. Was that ever a serious discussion? Can it be in the future? Can you tell me the status of that?
The UGB expansion that we're proposing is only for land that the city currently owns.
Okay.
I believe that there are goals to connect the Santa Clara Community Park to the river, and that that boat landing may be a way to do that. As land gets acquired by the city in the future, we can certainly look to bringing it into the UGB.
Does it not make sense for us to put that within the UGB in advance of acquisition?
We could look at it. I'd have to look at a map and see if there's any intervening lands there, or if there's a direct connection.
As we have larger plans for, and we've worked incrementally over time at the rivers and to ridges plan, I think one of our deficiencies now is more land along the river for public parks. And I'd like to see us focusing on that more, especially for folks in the north. And to me, that seems like one of the perfect places to begin that work. So I'll look forward to more discussions about that.
Great.
Thanks.
Chris is up next, but I do want to remind all of us that it's hard to hear out there, so speak up, please. Lean into the mic. Okay, so, Chris.
Thank you.
You're an exception.
Can anybody hear me?
Chris and I don't have any problem being heard.
Can you hear me?
Could before.
Is it, and I'm trying to understand what happens if, this is a what-if question. If we were to say, you know what? We looked really hard, and we just couldn't find any sites that we really felt comfortable using. And so, I'm sorry, we're just not going to do anything. What would happen at the state level? What would happen? What would be the implication for us? Would there be a consequence?
Yes. What we would need to do if we looked and looked and looked and only found 100 acres, or something like that, or two sites, we would have to revise our need documents. So this whole case and need for the 11 sites is based on a series of assumptions and trend analysis and all of that, documented in an economic opportunities analysis. So if we'd said, we can't meet the need identified in there, we'd have to revise our assumptions and other things that address the need by, in other ways. So maybe we say, we can't, you know, can't meet those goals that we had. Then we would have to revise those documents. In this case, we're pretty darned close to the number of acres we identified. And since we built the case on a targeted industry site approach, and gave ourselves some flexibility in site size ranges, we are in roughly the middle of the range that we identified a need for. So that no revisions to the documentation would be required with this recommendation.
But if we wanted to say, we're not going to expand, then you're saying we'd have to revise our documents to say, we don't plan on any growth in those areas, and then figure out a way to keep those 3,000 jobs from coming so we didn't have to provide the land for them?
Have to be a different kind of jobs, I guess.
But, I mean, that's what I'm getting at. In other words, if we think there's 3,000 jobs coming, we need to accommodate them. So if we can't accommodate them, then we need to figure out how to not have 3,000 jobs come. Or am I kind of, no?
The job forecast wouldn't change. The number of jobs would still be the same. We would just have to pick different industries that don't require land.
Pick different industries that don't require land?
Yeah.
What might be an example of an industry that doesn't require?
Well, one of our targeted industries is software. We don't really anticipate software companies moving out to Clear Lake. They're filling in downtown. But 100% of our job need is not going to be in software. So it's a diversified list of targeted industries that have different land needs.
Okay.
And what I would just add to it, remember, part of what our economic prosperity goals are, it's numbers of jobs, but it also has to do with wage rates, and living wages, and all those kinds of things. And not all industries will provide enough of those kinds of jobs, and actually, to meet our economic prosperity goals. So I would say, one of the outcomes could be that we aren't able to accommodate industries that also provide the number, but types of jobs that we hope for in our region.
Yeah, and I think that's what I'm trying to understand, is the underlying concept behind why we need land, or why we don't need land. And what I'm hearing is, the underlying concept is, you could grow just jobs, but they might not be the kinds of jobs we want to have, or sustainable jobs, or whatever. But the kind of jobs we would like to have, as we accommodate growth, might be jobs that would be best suited to this scenario that you're working on. So it's not as if we're forced by the state to do it exactly this way. What we're saying is, we're doing it this way because we think it produces the best outcome overall for the employment picture. I mean, you could adjust things, but it might not adjust in a direction that's positive. A second question would be, you know, we talk about industrial. And when somebody says the word "industrial", you think of smokestacks, and oil wells, and, you know, billowing smoke. I don't think that's the kind of industrial you're talking about when you say "industrial". If you were to illustrate for me, in my mind, what you mean when you say "industrial", what does that look like? What's an example, say, in the local area that describes? You mentioned a little bit about the Willow Creek area, something like that. What are some other examples of the kind of industrial you're talking about, as opposed to the picture I might get in my mind, which is giant polluters, and smokestacks, and, you know, train cars?
Right. Okay, thank you. I'll point to the map, because you'll see that this northern portion is kind of a pink color, and it's the same zoning and plan designation as the existing industrial area here on Airport Road. So this building is Gloria B. Foods, and right here is Springfield Creamery. And up here is Blackley Lane Electric Co-op. There's, Royal Refuge has their facility right here. So there's really a mix of things that are general industry in the pink areas. As you get further south, we're proposing campus industrial. And when I say that, and the zoning that would regulate that would be the E1 Zone that we recently adopted for Chad Drive, Green Hill, and Hynek's. And so out there, we have Registered Guard, the new Vets Clinic. We've got Chambers Communication, and a beverage manufacturing distribution in Green Hill. So it's more office-park type. There are different landscape regulations and street designs in campus industrial areas that are different from what we would see in general industry north of Clear Lake Road.
Great. Thank you, thank you.
Councilor Evans?
Thanks, Mayor. Good presentation. I'm trying to get to three things in three minutes, so I may need another round, Mayor. But first, I want to talk a little bit about the fact that currently, we are engaged in the Bethel area in an economic development visioning process, which Councilor Pryor and Councilor Soretta are working with me on that, along with Ethan Nelson and staff, and some other folks that are putting in a lot of time and a lot of effort in that. And that effort is complementary to, or I think, in some ways, an integral part of what we're looking at in terms of the realization of Envision Eugene in that part of the community. One of the things that I want to kind of touch on and talk about is the issue of, you know, what Chris had just mentioned about, you know, what is the character of the industrial footprint in the area? And I think it is very eclectic. There's Childers Meats, there's Springfield Creamery. There's a number of other concerns that are located in and around Airport Road. From my perspective, I don't see the current menu of businesses that are out there having any major, heavy footprint impact in terms of pollution and other things. I think that there is concern from the neighbors that I have talked to, live around there, that that could change. I don't think that that's what the intent is, and I don't think that that's what, at the end of the day, will happen. I think that we're looking at, through our planning process and our visioning process, are two things for this area. One is the further development of food and beverage industry, both from the ground-to-table kind of, you know, arc, if you will. And we're also looking at identifying specific discreet parcels of land for development and redevelopment. And given the nature and the context of the community, I feel fairly confident that this process, along with what's going on with Envision Eugene, will provide a product that is compatible for the community. So I'm not quite in the same category as Councilors Brown and Taylor on this. I think that there are some real opportunities that we have to leverage the assets that we have in the area, particularly land assets. The second thing, I think I'm probably going to need another round, Mayor, because I'm coming to the end of my deal, but put me in for that.
Thank you for that. Okay, Councilor Foley? Allen?
Allen?
He's asleep.
So I don't have any comments at this time. All right. First of all, I want to commend the city staff, all the additional groups, as well as the people throughout the community that got involved in this very long, drawn-out process. And they've done a lot of real hard work to get us to the point that we're in right now. You know, growth is going to happen, whether we want it to occur or not. The best thing that we could do is to try to manage that growth. And based on what was given to work with, I think the recommended areas of expansion are probably the only choices we have. As far as the farmlands out there, I've lived in this community for 38 years now, and I have never seen anything in those farmlands in those 38 years, other than hay, and grass seed and hay. To me, that, it either indicates that the farmland is not all that good, or people aren't interested in providing food for the community on that, those acres out there that we're looking at. You know, without expanding and increasing areas for new jobs, we're actually doing the city a disservice by not helping increase our tax base. And if the jobs aren't here, they're going to go elsewhere, into other communities, which, in the long run, is not beneficial to our environment, because that's going to cause more people to travel farther, to go to work. So I think we're on the right path here. You know, and the list that you have, kind of switching gears here, on the targeted industries, I think is kind of narrow. I believe there are other targeted industries out there that are on the verge of coming forward, that are actually softer on the environment than what we have listed. And I think we should keep that definition of targeted industries kind of open for the time being, because, you know, we don't know what's going to happen in the future, as far as that. I do have one question. In our earlier conversations, there was some 30,000-foot view talk about annexing the airport property. Where does that now sit with this whole process? Are we looking at continuing that discussion down the road? Or where are we on that?
You actually have a memo in your packet, at the end of your packet, that goes over that, but I'll give you the highlights, which is to say that we did take a look at it with the airport staff, and looked at it from a variety of different angles. So does it make sense to come into the UGB for regulatory reasons, financial reasons, airport operations, those kinds of things? And the upshot is that there doesn't seem to be a significant benefit to either the airport or the city to bring the land into the urban growth boundary. They have their own airport master plan, controlled by FAA and other regulations. And so with this expansion, we'll directly abut the land controlled by the airport, and our UGB will be expanded to meet the airport boundary. So we think it makes sense to continue managing those under separate plans, but coordinating our efforts.
Thank you.
So I do have George Brown, Greg Evans, and Mike Clark in the queue, but I am going to move us to the second half of this, and hold this line to come back to after they do their second, the second half of the presentation.
All right, so now we're going to turn to our single-family home need. I would like to start with a refresher of the 2012 recommendation for homes. At that time, the recommendation included two areas for expansion. First was actually the Clear Lake area, southeast of the airport, and then the Bailey Hill, Gimble Hill area, which is southwest of the current urban growth boundary. So Clear Lake is here, Bailey Hill is down there. This recommendation was really a balance between accommodating homes inside the current urban growth boundary, while maintaining the livability and sense of place that we all love. Following that recommendation, City Council directed staff to consider two additional areas, those being the Lane Community College area, and then a property kind of west of the Hynek's site in the vicinity of Willow Creek Road. And I'll get more details about those. But as a reminder, at the time of that direction, staff did make it clear that we would have to evaluate these in the context of the state law, which we reopened our evaluation and looked at the entire study area. We can't just look at preferred areas. So this represents Eugene's current urban growth boundary. It was established back in 1982, and for the past 20 years, it has accommodated all of our housing needs. By embracing the concept of compact development, and by using our land responsibly, effectively, and efficiently, we have been able to maintain this urban growth boundary with no expansions for housing need. As we look ahead to the next 20 years, the Envision Eugene recommendation focuses on accommodating the vast majority of our future housing needs inside this urban growth boundary, with a modest expansion for single-family homes, thereby continuing our legacy of using this land responsibly. Before I present the preliminary recommendation for where that expansion should occur, I do want to briefly walk you through the steps of the analysis that led to that recommendation. And as Teri noted, the urban growth boundary expansion is controlled by state law, and these laws are fairly complex and prescriptive, and I won't go into a lot of detail there. And the steps are actually fairly similar between employment and housing, but there are a few subtle differences. So the first step really is to establish, what is our single-family housing need over the next 20 years, and whether or not that can fit inside the urban growth boundary. As you can see from this slide, that we can fit 94% of our future housing need inside our current urban growth boundary. That's about 8,200 homes. And that will occur on vacant lands, lands that are partially developed, as well as on those lands that were recently, the council recently approved for redesignation to single-family. The remaining or unmet need, that's 6%, or 530 homes, requires the urban growth boundary expansion. And I'll note that this need is determined based on a number of things, including the adopted population, the 20-year population forecast, city council direction to use a housing mix of 55% single-family, 45% multifamily for new housing, as well as many other assumptions and technical data. So the next step in the process is to establish the study area. As you can see, we use the same exact study area for all our proposed urban growth boundary expansions. The third step requires that all the land within the study area be sorted into categories based on plan designation. Again, Teri covered this, but just as a reminder, those lands that are colored in rust are our very first priority for expansion, and the seafoam green, which represents the farm and forest lands, are our last priority for consideration. This map just isolates those lands that are in our first priority for urban growth boundary expansion. Again, these are lands that have been designated by the county as residential, industrial- Again, these are lands that have been designated by the county as residential, industrial, commercial, or government education uses. You'll notice that neither the Clear Lake area, where we had previously proposed homes, or the property west of the Hynek site appear on this map, as they're not within that first category of lands for us to consider. So the next step in the process, we are required to exclude lands that are not considered buildable or suitable for our single-family housing. And that includes lands that are publicly owned and not suitable or available for single-family housing, such as the airport, lands that are wholly or predominantly within the floodplain, lands that are severely constrained by steep slopes, lands that are situated in areas with severe negative compatibility issues, and finally, any lands that just cannot reasonably be served. Once we've excluded those lands, we're left with these five study areas. And here I want to note that within these areas, these five study areas, there is well more than enough land to meet our housing need of 530 homes. So that means at this point, we're required to do a comparative analysis of these five areas, and as a result, we'll determine which area, which of the areas, or which portions of these areas will kind of rise to the top to best meet our needs for the urban growth boundary expansion for housing. Again, the Clear Lake and the Deg Trust property are not, or the property west of Hynek don't show on this map. They're not our first priority of lands. We are allowed to look at the minimal amount of farm and forest lands, only if they're needed to provide services to these study areas shown up here, or to connect these study areas to the urban growth boundary. All right, so the comparative analysis has to be based on these four factors that come from state law. It's really a balancing and weighing exercise at this point. We're not tossing out any of these areas. It's kind of just ranking them and seeing which ones come to the top and which ones come to the bottom, and you know, which ones ultimately best meet our needs. As part of the comparative analysis, we conducted extensive and exhaustive site analysis of the five remaining areas. These are the kinds of things that we looked at for all of the areas. I'm not gonna go through all the details of the analysis today. We have a great deal of this information in the packets, actually in your agenda item summary, as well as give you a lot of maps in front of you today. I do want to spend just a few minutes orienting you to the five study areas. Again, here are those five remaining areas. The first two on the left, this one's along Crow Road, and then this piece is along Willow Creek. Really during the evaluation, it was evident early on that these two areas were just really not on par with the other three for a variety of reasons. But for instance, the Crow area is one of the only areas, actually the only area where there's active farm use surrounding the priority land. And then for Willow Creek, it had exceptionally high service costs. So at this point, we knew that our focus would really be on the other three areas. So I'll walk you through these. The first is located along Bailey Hill/Gimble Hill roads, southwest of the current urban growth boundary. And then this map is in your packet as well, and there's a lot of information in it, but I'll orient you. Bailey Hill Road is located here. Gimble Hill comes off of Bailey Hill and comes along here. The striped properties, those are the four pockets up there, those are the lands that are rural residential. So again, our first priority for consideration for expansion. You'll see the current urban growth boundary is this dotted line, so it follows along here. And the red boundary is our expanded study area, and we needed to look at, you know, in terms of looking at the context, looking where services might have to extend to get to some of these areas, looking where the streams continued, where any wetlands continued. So we did broaden the study area, but I want to point out, the focus really is on those striped or residential properties. And you'll note that only two of them are contiguous with the urban growth boundary. The other two, they're farm and forest lands between them and the urban growth boundary. The brown is farmland, and the green represents forest land. Next area is Crest Chambers, located where Crest and Chambers intersect, and Crest becomes Lorraine Highway, also somewhat south of the Crest Schools property. So again, this is Crest, or no, this is Chambers, coming down here. Crest comes in here, turns into Lorraine, and then Blanton kind of comes along the southern portion. The striped area is the rural residential land, that is our first priority for consideration. The urban growth boundary follows along here, the dotted line. The red is our expanded boundary. Within this particular area, there are marginal lands showing in turquoise, there's some agricultural land showing in brown, there is some forest land showing in the green. And then the third and final focus area is Bloomberg/McVay, along Bloomberg/McRoad and McVay Road, or Highway, on the north side of 30th, across from the Lane Community College. So just to orient you again, this is 30th coming here, and then both I-5 and McVay along here, and this is the Lane Community College campus. And the current urban growth boundary is actually, I guess, on here, the red line, the outer red line. The whole red area is the expanded study area. In this study area, the first priority lands are, again, are those in the stripes. Here we have some rural residential lands, some industrial and some commercial fronting along the road. Other lands in the area include some parkland. This army green is forest land, and then the brown represents land that's been designated for farm. So in addition to the extensive site analysis, we shared that information with and sought input from a variety of groups and stakeholders. This included the Technical Resource Group, who vetted information for us, and the Planning Commission, who provided us a lot of feedback. There is a memo in the handouts today for you from the Technical Resource Group. We also met with a subcommittee that consisted of members of the Planning, the Sustainability and Human Rights Commission, who conducted a triple bottom line analysis for us, looking at the three focus areas. And the results of that analysis are also attached to the agenda item summary. And then we held meetings that were geared towards the property owners and residents of the three focus areas, really because of the unique impact on properties that were to become inside the urban growth boundary and no longer be under the county. And the summary of those meetings is also in your packet. Throughout our comparative analysis, and as well as during the stakeholder input, one of the things that we heard over and over is that all of these study areas have challenges, and we wholly recognize that. With one exception, the areas have pretty high, pretty large infrastructure investments compared to the number of units that we're looking at serving. They all have topographic and natural resource constraints, and you'll see that during the triple bottom line analysis, one of those areas, none of the areas rose to the top. However, all things considered, we do think that there are two areas that will best meet our needs as a community. So I'm gonna provide you the preliminary recommendation now. We recommend a small expansion in the Bailey Hill/Gimble Hill study area, those portions that are contiguous to the urban growth boundary. This is a relatively cost-effective area to serve and leverages investments that will be needed to serve areas already inside the current urban growth boundary. However, these small areas will not cover all of Eugene's need, so in addition, we're recommending an expansion in the Bloomberg/McVay study area. This will require a small amount of intervening farm and forest land to connect to the urban growth boundary. However, this small extension is designated to, designed to include Bloomberg Park and an e-web reservoir, so minimizing the need for any farm and forest land as much as possible. Together, these relatively small sites, three, provide enough capacity for our total expansion need of approximately 530 homes. So this is a close-up of the Bailey Hill recommendation. You'll see it's the two areas immediately adjacent to the current urban growth boundary. These are the most cost-effective of all the study areas that we've looked at in terms of providing services. They're relatively cost-effective due to the fact that infrastructure that would be required to serve these areas is actually, needs to, well, hold on. These are relatively cost-effective due to the infrastructure that is required to serve areas that are already inside the current urban growth boundary but not yet served. So this area inside the current urban growth boundary is designated low-density residential, and the city has not yet provided services. So in total, these two sites incorporate about 60 acres and have capacity for about 135 homes. And they would be redesignated to low-density residential, in yellow. This is a close-up of the Bloomberg/McVay area. While it has considerably higher infrastructure costs associated with it, it does have many other useful attributes that are in alignment with our community values. First, it is the only study area that is currently served by transit, and it responds to plans for extending the MX system, which brings in the connections between this area and the rest of the community. It reaches out towards Lane Community College, a highly valued regional institution that plays a vital role in building prosperity in our region. It has the most potential to become a complete neighborhood, as it already includes a commercial area. It's situated between existing regional job centers, including the downtowns of Eugene and Springfield. It connects with major streets in the region and creates possibilities for more efficient shared utilities and services, and it provides access to parks and natural areas, including our Ridgeline Park system. In the addition, in addition, in the long term, it also has realistic potential for urban reserves. Urban reserves allow communities to plan for up to 50 years of growth, which enables longer-term, more comprehensive planning to occur. If the Lane Community College basin area is eventually identified as urban reserves, it can be master-planned in a way to accommodate complete 20-minute neighborhoods that the other study areas cannot. Planning expansion areas for 20-minute neighborhoods is actually a goal in the Envision Eugene recommendation under the Climate and Energy pillar and the Affordable Housing pillar. So we think this area has the most potential to realize that goal. This area incorporates about 230 acres, and it has a capacity for about 400 homes. And I will point out that the existing and commercial lands, we recommend that those remain as employment lands in recognition of their existing uses. So this is also kind of part of the recommendation. So planning for urban reserves, once our 20-year urban growth boundary is established, is also a staff recommendation. Urban reserve planning is an important component of the ongoing monitoring of our land supply and provides both flexibility and certainty for the community in future years. There's a number of things that we'd also, we know we need to look at further. One of the things we heard during the property owner meetings is that the need to allow for some of the common practices on these parcels that are currently rural to continue until they became fully urbanized. One example would be farm animals, making sure that they didn't have to, you know, eliminate half their herd because of this line. We also know that these areas have significant natural resources, and these would need to be given the same protections that are given to significant resources that are currently inside the urban growth boundary. And finally, we know there's transportation issues, either local or regional, and those will be addressed and coordinated with the city's update of the transportation system plan, as well as with the county and the state. This map illustrates the preliminary recommendation for expansion for jobs, parks, schools, and homes. So the proposed expansions are shown in orange outline. Those are about a 3% increase in our community's footprint, and for context, we're expecting an almost 20% increase in our population over the next 20 years. So given current council directions and the assumptions that we're working with, we feel that this is a balanced recommendation that meets state law as well as the community's values and long-term interests. State law says we need to find room for a growing population and spells out how that has to be done. This recommendation for a small UGB expansion combines the deeply-held values and attributes of our community within the context of the state law. As a community, Eugene has done more than almost any other community to protect prime farm and forest land and our beloved natural resources. We've grown responsibly and compactly over 30 years since our first UGB was established. This recommendation holds true to that legacy while taking small steps in the right direction to provide for a growing population. Thank you.
So I have in the queue George Brown, Greg Evans, Mike Clark, George Pauling, Chris Pryor. And I just want to begin this next questioning period, and this is not for council as much as it is for the public, just to reemphasize that the direction that our staff has taken comes at the direction of council, and under the guidance of state policy, and they have brought us their best thinking, and now it's up to us to figure out what to do with that best thinking. Thank you for that. George Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Was any thought given to expanding light industrial uses in this area? I see, and in fact, I'm familiar with one of the businesses there. I see that it's already, there are already rural commercial and rural industrial uses at the eastern edge of the Bloomberg/McVay, right by I-5, is that correct?
So those are currently designated for rural industrial uses, correct?
So my question is, was any thought given to, are they currently being used that way, or are they just zoned that way?
Yes. No, they're currently fully developed.
Acupied by going concern. Okay, so was there any thought given to expanding those outside the boundaries that you've marked on this drawing of like, maybe cutting into this forest land up here?
So...
If we're gonna go after agriculture, here's my point. If we're gonna go after agricultural land, Clear Lake Road, which I think is totally improper, why wouldn't we go after forest land? Because it's right by I-5, and this is what, this is what any business needs. I mean, you need to be close to transportation so you can ship your product. I understand, fully understand, why the Clear Lake Road area seems so attractive to you, because there's Highway 99 right there, and there's the airport. Springfield Creamery, for instance, ships a lot of stuff, air freight, refrigerated, all over the whole country. So I get the attraction. I just think that the negatives outweigh any positives in that area. So I guess I was just wondering, you know, why wouldn't we think about expanding into this forest land? A lot of this really is not high-quality forest, anyway. I mean, if you tramp around in there, you will see that it's lower quality than, say, like pristine old growth forest, or something like that.
I'll provide a response to that. Originally, when we looked at different study areas for employment, in particular, larger lot industrial, the LCC basin was one of the four places that we looked, and Clear Lake, Game Farm Road, and Goshen, actually. This area dropped off because of the sloped nature of the land. It wasn't the forest designation in itself, but it was the nature of the sloped land and our established need for flatter sites. So that's the short answer.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I've been kind of around here outside of the LCC campus, and it's, you're correct, it is kind of difficult. I think there are certain parcels that would be suitable. And then you considered Goshen. What happened with that consideration?
Well, Goshen is a county, regional, industrial priority, and they're pursuing designation as such, as part of Lane County. They're disconnected from our UGB by quite some distance, which is the primary reason it didn't rise to the top. It's not adjacent to our existing UGB.
Okay. I understand Springfield's considering annexing Goshen. Is that correct?
Yeah, actually, the Lane County Board of Commissioners asked Springfield to take a look at that as part of their expansion for industrial.
Gee, I wonder why they didn't ask us? Maybe they ought to ask both of us. Maybe they ought to ask both of us.
Really? Any answer to that?
Pardon me? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Greg Evans.
Thanks, Mayor. A couple of things here that jump out at me. When we talk about expanding and growth, one of the things that most concerns me is our capacity for service delivery. So when we look at public safety, public works, you know, parks maintenance, what have been the conversations and discussions in terms of what investments we're going to need to potentially meet this growth in those areas? Given the fact that currently, we are meeting most of our needs in these areas, but we are stretched thin in some areas. We're stretched thin in fire. I think we're stretched thin in police. We have a backlog in road maintenance. What kinds of strategies have been talked about in terms of investments before we get to the point where we actually add these parcels in? And what is kind of the analysis about how we address that ongoing management of those, of that service delivery that we need? So for instance, we can have a natural assumption that if we annex certain pieces of property and develop those properties, whether that be industrial, commercial, residential, or whatever, that there's going to be a certain accrument of tax revenue from that. Would that, those revenues be enough to support the service, the added service that we're going to need to provide? That's one issue. And second issue is, my assumption is, as things get more and more expensive, and we're going to have some more technology needs, that we're going to need to have a strategic plan to be able to, you know, deal with the residents, the folks in the businesses that we have existing. So I'm particularly concerned about that as we go forward in looking at budgets, and what are the plans for us to strategically make those investments that are necessary to provide full service delivery?
I'll start off with that one, but I think it's a multi-part question. It might take multiple of us to answer that. So I do want to just start off by saying we have been coordinating really closely with Public Works in terms of services, as well as with E-Web, Fire. We have folks here from both Public Works and Fire, in case you have specific questions. We know that it's, you know, it's not inexpensive to expand services into these areas. Some areas are more expensive than others. We do know that the planning for this would occur through the Capital Improvement Plan, the program, and that's where the prioritization comes. Typically, funding of these would occur through system development charges that are, you know, paid for citywide. And I'm going to pass that on to you then.
No, I think your first question, Greg, is a really good question. It's one that I think gets bandied about in multiple forums over multiple generations, and that is, does development completely pay it for all the service that it takes? And so I know there's a lot of information studies that have been done about that, and so we can probably help provide some of that sort of in general. I think the other piece, why the LCC Basin area, as Alyssa mentioned, has some appeal, and even though there's some higher upfront infrastructure costs on a per-unit basis, if we start thinking about urban reserves, those infrastructures actually become less expensive over time on a per-unit basis, because you just are distributing those over a wider numbers of units. And so that's partly why that has an appeal, as well as many others, as Alyssa mentioned.
I'd also just point out that you do have all of the cost estimates for infrastructure extension in the packet that we put at your places for all of the different five study areas that we've looked at.
What about the ongoing cost of maintenance and regular services?
And I think that's part of that, that's part of that question, does the taxes that are collected off those new properties pay for all the services? And that's part of that, that's part of that, does it pay for itself, which I think is a broader conversation, which we can provide some more information in sort of a generic basis, because that's been a topic of discussion for years in many forums.
And that's more what I'm trying to get to, John, is the ongoing long-term cost and the increase in cost based upon what we are going to need, you know, down the road in technology and other pieces of investments that we may currently not be aware of.
Mike Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate, again, all of your work. Greg brings up an excellent point. I have a different take on it, but it's just a difference of how you look at it. Your questions are important, but from my perspective, Eugene's going to grow. That's as virtual a certainty as death and taxes. And we know, because the county paid Portland State a few years ago now to tell us that it's going to be by 34,000 people in the 20-year window. Of course, we're going to do that again next year, and that number, I would be willing to bet my eye teeth, is going to be a good deal bigger than 34,000. If we do see climate refugees, if we take account of that as a potential for increased population, that people will move here because California doesn't have any water, the number's going to be a great deal bigger. So state law says we have to plan for that. It says we have, we can't just let it happen willy-nilly. We have land use planning here in Oregon, so we have to say how, and we have to say where. And we all have to do that. And so this discussion is a great one about the best places, and we'll look forward to getting into more of those details as this next, as the winter goes along. But here's the interesting take on what you brought up. The lands don't cost the money, the people do. The people are going to be here, they're going to demand services. No matter where they live, if they live in super-tall buildings all in downtown Eugene, the number of people will still have an increased need for fire protection, and an increased need for police protection, and an increased draw on services. It's the people that cost the money. But the revenue comes from the land. Most of what we get tax money from is the amount of land. So the more land we add, the greater the revenue to meet the service demand that we don't have any choice on, because we can't say, "Don't move here." We can't say, "You're not allowed to move here." And so it's going to happen. For me, it only makes sense for us to look at planning as much land as is reasonable to bring in, because it only adds to the revenue side on a lopsided basis compared to the demand on the service side. I had a couple of questions for what you just presented. Was the initial assessments of the, of the study areas done prior to or post the decision for extending water to Vanita?
I don't even know when the decision of extending water...
For example, the DAG property and whether the study area, in order to put that in, was that decision to exclude that because of cost made prior to or post the extension?
All of the cost estimates are made post that decision. All of the cost estimates.
The initial ones to exclude that from the area, is that correct? Exclude the, exclude from consideration?
Correct. The ones that were excluded, yes.
Okay. Okay. When you mentioned, I'm going to run out of time, and I need another round, Mayor.
I'm just telling you, folks, that would like another round...
Unless there's one more quick question?
Just, no, we have three people in line. So I'm just letting you know, we may run out of time. If you want to extend it, it's up to you guys.
Okay.
All right. George Polling.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I've had some computer problems at home. We received an email with a letter from Mark Reader, who's the attorney that's representing the DAG trust properties. My question is, and I remember when we first discussed this in 2012, when we were made aware that, you know, you have this large parcel of over 200 acres of land that's owned by basically one owner that's willing to play with the city, why aren't we considering it? Now, I'm not a planner, I'm not a developer, but I finally got the email, the letter open briefly last night, and again this morning, just before I left the house. It took me 15 minutes to actually print out a 10-page letter, because something's going on. So I kind of read through that. I believe that there has been a number of issues raised in this letter that has my interest piqued again in that, that area out there. And I don't mean this in a derogatory way, but I feel like the reason why it was taken off the table, the reason we were given just now, the reason why it was taken off the table, was rather dismissive. I mean, it's just like, it's just going to cost too much money. But if you look at some of the other areas we are considering, I think it's going to be just as expensive, if not more, to run services to some of these areas. So I don't know how to do this, or how to go about this, but I, and I have no dealings, no benefit from this at all, other than I would like us to see, to reconsider that area, if there's a way we could do that, and go through a mini-process involving the neighbors, like we did with the other three study areas before the, I guess it's called the Willow Creek area, was dismissed from consideration. I don't know if that's possible, or, you know, there's state laws and regulations on how we do the, you know, choose which areas we pick, but, you know, with little legal knowledge that I have, I know there is wiggle room in all laws and rules and regulations, and I was wondering if they were applied in this, in this case, when it goes to setting the priorities as far as which areas we choose and pick for possible expansion.
All right. So as I mentioned, this process, what lands we look at, how we look at them, what we consider, is tightly controlled by state law, and our very first priorities of lands to look at are those residential lands, industrial and commercial, lands that are essentially already designated that. So for instance, this particular property owned by the DAG trust is actually designated for forest. So it doesn't make it to that first category of lands that we're required to look at. There is some wiggle room to look at farm and forest land, but only to connect those rural residential lands to our current urban growth boundary. So for instance, there is a study area just south of this property that's rural residential lands. There's a pocket of rural residential lands there that I, those are the ones that are exceedingly high cost to serve. If, for some other reason, those rose to the top, we would be able to justify potentially taking in any, a minimal amount of farm or forest lands that got us from that pocket of rural residential lands to our urban growth boundary, which would really be to the east of this Willow Creek area, not to the north. We really could only take in a minimal amount of farm and forest land.
And I would add that that property would not be the property that would get us to the urban growth boundary. So even if the costs weren't exceedingly high, and we were able to take in that, that study area, there isn't a connection to the DAG trust, and so we wouldn't be able to consider it. This is our reading of the law. We've worked very closely with our city council. This is their reading of the law. And we've even done, had a meeting with representatives from the Department of Land Conservation and Development with the state of Oregon, and they're in agreement with our, with what got us to our, they haven't seen the final recommendation, but withdrawing off those other two. So we're pretty confident that we can't get there. Now, I would say, urban reserves might be a different story. This, again, is planning for 50 years of growth, and we are able, because we're looking at a bigger, we're casting a wider net, we're looking at more homes, we may be able to look at farm and forest lands, and so we will definitely look at it in the context of urban reserves.
All right. And I don't know, I'm assuming that you've had time to go through the 10-page letter that was sent out and try to formulate some responses, but I still think we should, we should at least take a longer, harder look at the issues brought up, we as a council, the issues brought up in that letter. And, you know, it might delay this whole process, but that's, you know, I'd like kind of a more, a more detailed response to some of the issues, if I could get them.
We will need a council motion for that. I think my concern, one, it will take a lot of time, but two, the issue for us is an a cost issue, it's a legal issue around how do you actually select lands in accordance with state law? My guess is some people will disagree with that, so we could provide a legal opinion back to you on that particular piece, but if it's, if it will take hours and hours of work to respond to the questions, then I think we will want a council motion to do that.
You don't have time for a motion. We'll extend.
Well, we're not going to be doing it today, and you could bring it up at a future meeting, but that's, because I think everybody would need to, council would need to look at it and make a decision about whether they supported that motion or not. Chris, go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you. Just thank you for all the great work you've done. I attended some, the forum, particularly the one around Bailey Hill Road. And so I would absolutely reinforce, just quickly, the notion that we need to be much more clear on what are the uses within that urban growth boundary. It's kind of a limbo land, and I think what I heard very clearly was, whatever we do, we need to make sure that that's clear in there for them. I also love the idea of the urban reserve. I think that really has some real opportunities for us and can provide us with some increased flexibility and some additional ways we can do things. But a word that you used that, to me, was extremely important and really resonated, was you used the word balance, and how this is an attempt to try to find a balance between what, in many respects for me, is livability and growth. There's many, many trade-offs here, but that's one of them. Something that we've been hearing a lot, and is really beginning to resonate, is the notion of neighborhood livability. And the degree to which what we're talking about doing here in terms of expansion and growth is also a reflection or a way of addressing the notion of maintaining livability within our neighborhoods. And how the desire to expand is a reflection of that balance between density, livability, and growth. And so I'm assuming that the numbers you're presenting here are a reflection of that balance between livability and growth. And so I just wanted you to, just give me a quick perspective on what is the neighborhood livability element that you feel that this is a good reflection of, or what is the perspective on neighborhood livability that this addresses?
Sure. So prior to the expansion analysis, we spent a lot of time talking about efficiency measures and how we would grow in a more compact way inside the urban growth boundary. And to that end, you passed a number of code amendments and zone changes. We re-designated some properties, we looked at single-family code amendments. Through those processes, I think we tried to find the right balance of what people inside the urban growth boundary, inside our existing neighborhoods, would tolerate as far as increased density. We are not proposing changing our codes to increase density in our existing urban growth boundary. That was made clear throughout this whole process. We looked at other ways, such as re-designation, such as secondary dwelling units, things like that, to try to find more minimal ways to increase density. And so I think through the actions that the council has taken in adopting those different code amendments, we've, we've done our kind of due diligence in finding what is the tolerance level for density inside our urban growth boundary. Everything that's left over gets put into the urban growth boundary expansion. That's what that 530 units represents.
So in your perspective, the recommendations you're making for the expansion do reflect the desire to maintain the livability within the existing neighborhoods, to the degree that you feel is possible to do?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. Great. Great. And then the last thing is...
I have a motion to...
Move to extend 10 minutes, or second?
In second. How long? 10 minutes?
I have only one more important question I'd really like to ask.
All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five in favor, one in opposition, it passes. Okay.
That's fine. I can be done at that point. Thanks.
Okay. And I have Betty, next.
Thank you. And I won't take much, about 10 minutes. I don't think we're going to settle anything today, but I think Greg made an excellent point, that growth does cost money. And if you'll notice, anytime the schools are asking for more money, or the police are asking for more officers, they always say it's because we've grown, because the population is much bigger. Maybe we can't stop growth, but we don't have to encourage it. One thing we can do, if we actually need 550 more homes, I guess that means dwelling units... units, right?
Yes.
We could change the, what we're asking for in the ratio of multifamily to single-family easily, and that would take care of it. Instead of saying 55% single-family and 45% multiple, we could reverse that, or we could even say 60% multiple family of new housing, and if we're running out of space. Also, not only do more people and more dwellings cost money, but the more spread out it is, the more money it costs. Fire's an easy example of that, and water is another easy example. And also, I wonder if we're, if the people who are waiting to get into the urban growth boundary, because they think it's going to be financially good for them, realize that they might be charged for improving their streets once they're in the city. Thank you.
So I have George Brown and Mike Clark in the second round. George?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to return briefly to Clear Lake Road, the Clear Lake Road discussion, and just answer a couple of things I heard from a couple of the councillors. Councillor Poling was remarking on the quality of the soils in that region, averring that, you know, he's only seen grass seed and hay being grown there, and, you know, that's true. But if you go from Eugene to Corvallis on Highway 99, and if you've been paying attention, if you're into this stuff, like I am, been paying attention the last few years in the fall, you will notice there are many, many thousands of acres that are now wheat fields, where previously were grass seed. And so, you know, Oregon agriculture is really a very, one of the, one of the big growth sectors in the state economy, and so Class 1 and 2 soils, I just want to reiterate, they are the highest classification of soil quality in this state. They're very limited, they're really rare, they're a gift from the Missoula event, actually a series of them, tens of thousands of years ago, dumped all this, the topsoil is several feet thick in some areas. That's really unique. Secondly, when you showed the picture up there, the map, and we were talking about, oh, gosh, you know, there's glory bees there, the Springfield creamerys there, yes, that's true, but right across the road, right across Highway 99, are some of the most toxically polluting industries in all of town, and my point was, they're all concentrated in this zip code area, all of them, except for one. One company that has toxic emissions is not located in that zip code area, and I happen to know that at Echo Hollow School, there is an asthma cluster in that part of Bethel. About 40% of the kids have asthma. That's, I heard it from the nurse, that's unbelievable. So there are, there are toxic emissions, it's known, 486,000 pounds go to the air. You know how much, what a pound of air looks like? It's like, probably about 10 rooms this size would be a pound. So it's a big-time problem, and I think it's really a mistake to think about expanding into this area for these, for these uses. Thank you.
Six minutes to go, Mike.
Betty mentioned the 550 house need. That's just the houses outside the UGB that are necessary. Inside the UGB in the next 20 years, we need well over 10,000 new dwelling units, and if the numbers next year come in the way they're expected to, that number could be that we need nearly 20,000 new dwelling units for people in the course of the next 20 years. Now, one of the things that you guys, and by the way, if we don't build them and provide them, there will literally be no affordable housing in the area, because the prices will skyrocket without them. The interesting thing to me was that you talked about this, has met 94% of the residential need within the current UGB, and only 6% without. But that assumption is that MPT is in place. So with, if we were to hypothetically say, we get rid of MPT, and we can no longer build the multiple units that we're planning for, the percentage that we know can't be built without it, what's the difference in the numbers? How many different number of houses outside the UGB? The percentage change, or the difference in what we're talking about in acres?
Just want to be clear, the 94% are homes, single-family homes that can be accommodated inside, so that 6% is just for single-family. You're right, MPT does have an impact on our ability to meet our multifamily housing--
If we don't have MPT anymore, if we, for whatever reason, voted away at this table or at the ballot, what's the impact on the UGB? How many more acres do we need to bring into the UGB without it?
Don't have that, that number. I believe that the number of units we're targeting through investments is 1,500, is that right? 1,500 units that we are attributing to investments for multifamily homes. If that goes away, those are 1,500 units that need to be accommodated elsewhere.
Which is how many acres?
It depends where it's located, honestly, and what densities you're assuming.
Roughly?
I can't even do math that quick.
What I want to do is let the people that are watching our conversation connect the dots to this, and understand that these kind of policy discussions have real-world consequences when we expand the UGB. If we don't have MPT in place, then it's going to mean a much bigger expansion by dozens, if not closer to 100 yards, excuse me, acres, excuse me. Thank you.
Greg, wrap it up.
We, we often talk about job creation, more or less from the private sector side. I know that there is commensurate issue in terms of developing jobs and growing jobs on the public sector side of the line, and one of my concerns is, as we look at this, and we look at this going out, is do we have a plan for workforce development? Do we have a plan to address potential talent deficits? Right now, we've got some deficits in, in, in the nursing field, we have deficits in other places. We are going to have to train new firefighters, new police officers, there's going to be more planning jobs that are going to be out there, all kinds of stuff in public works. What are we doing in terms of looking at factoring that into our planning for future growth and development?
Oh, as part of the whole economic prosperity work that we are engaged with in multiple partners, workforce development is a, has a recognized need for that. As part of that summit, was that earlier this year, 2O Summit, all the panels talked about the need for workforce development in all of these various targeted industries and clusters. So you're exactly right, that's got to be a parallel part of our strategy for the future prosperity of the community.
Do we have a parallel strategy yet?
I, I think what would be great is to have a separate work session, just talking about that. We'd want to bring in some other partners to, to talk about that, that kind of a conversation.
So with that, we're going to end this meeting, and we will pick up this and other heavy lifts come, come the new year. Thank you.
Merry Christmas.